All right, good afternoon. So, uh, good to be here with you all. This is Mayor Cyril Jefferson convening. Special meeting of the High Point City Council. We've got, um, seven, six members of council here present. Uh, Councilmember Moore is participating remotely and we do anticipate that the others will join us as soon as they can. Uh, we've got a few items on our agenda. Uh, before we get to our agenda though, uh, we'll actually entertain a motion to adopt our agenda. Motion's been made by Mayor Cora Tim Holmes and seconded by Councilmember Cook. Any discussion on the motion to adopt our agenda? All those in favor please signify by saying aye. Any against? The ayes have it and we have an agenda. Uh, first item's twenty twenty-four dash four one zero. This is information regarding the High Point Housing Impact Fund. Staff's gonna provide information, um, on our affordable housing needs and current affordable housing efforts. Uh, for this, we're gonna pass it to Ms. Nina Wilson, our Director of Community Development Housing, and I believe you've also got some guests here as well.
I do, yes sir. Um, good afternoon, Mayor and members of council, our manager and other guests. Um, we are excited really to bring you some information this afternoon on, um, affordable housing, uh, projects and things that are underway, as well as some new efforts that we are looking at hopefully undertaking to address, of course, this affordable housing crisis. Um, I do have here today JJ Frehler. He is with the, um, Self-Help Ventures Fund. And then we also have Joe Blosser, who is here representing the High Point Community Foundation. And just a quick background, um, in December, it was toward the end of last year in twenty twenty-three, uh, staff, we started kind of talking with the managers about, uh, looking at a housing loan fund or just having some other resources available for the development of affordable housing. Because we know that our federal grants, they are being cut. And we needed to look at other ways to leverage resources so that we can bring affordable housing units online a little bit more quickly. And so that's when, um, we got together with, uh, we invited the High Point Community Foundation, uh, Pinnacle Bank, there was a private developer. So several folks came together, stakeholders, just to kind of discuss the possibility, just to even see if there was some interest in developing this public-private partnership. And we got a good response. And so that was something that from that point on started researching and looking at what other cities in North Carolina are doing, as well as cities across the country. And, um, so this is not anything new. There are certainly a lot of other areas that are doing this. Excuse me, our neighbors in Greensboro, uh, they have, they developed their fund toward the end of last year. Um, we have Winston Salem. So again, we did have other areas that we could look at and just kind of determine what we thought would be the best pa- best path for High Point. First, we needed to look at how would we establish the need. I know that we have heard from the twenty sixteen study that we had, um, that was done, that we had a need of about ten thousand affordable housing units. And so we, when we look at our housing stock, um, HUD sort of defines, um, units with housing problems as those that lack, um, sufficient plumbing facilities or lack of a complete kitchen or occupancy of more than one person per room. And so when we look at those numbers, we can see that we really don't have those issues within our housing stock. But when you start looking at how many homeowners and how many renters are actually paying more than what we consider to be affordable and for their housing cost, that's basically thirty percent of their household income. If they're paying more than thirty percent of their household income, we consider them to be cost burdened. And so that's not affordable to that household, which means that in essence, they don't have other funding available for just basic living needs, whether it be healthcare, um, nutrition, food, you know, all of those things. They simply just don't have adequate resources for those. So we feel like and we know, just looking at the numbers, you've got twenty percent of homeowners that are cost burdened and forty-eight percent of renters. And so we realize that it's an affordable affordability issue when it comes to our affordable housing stock. And then our vacancy rate, out of forty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight total housing units, we have a vacancy rate of about five point two percent. People consider five to five percent to ten percent to pretty much be a healthy vacancy rate. And when we are looking at, let's just say, a property manager, they want their vacancy rate to be as low as possible. But when we have people that need housing, a low vacancy rate means we have an inadequate supply of housing. So at five point two percent, we're on that lower end, which basically means we need more units. And even though we say, okay, that could be roughly two thousand units, we don't know the condition of those units. You know, just because they may not have a HUD-defined housing problem, that does not mean that they are standard units. They could still be substandard units.
Nina, I'm sorry, just real quick on that slide, do you mind going back? The homeowner vacancy rate versus rental vacancy rate, are, where are we at with those numbers compared to what the standard is?
We're still low. We're still low. On average, um, homeowner vacancy rates are around seven percent. And in pre-COVID, when we looked at High Point numbers, that's what we were, we were, we were around that seven percent. And roughly about the same for the rental vacancies. So we are, we are below, we are, we are below what we would consider to be standard.
Yeah, I guess my brain was trying to figure out, could you, I, I guess maybe that's where you're about to go when it comes to housing stock. Cause I'm thinking about how we're lower in terms of the vacancy rate for, well, it seems to be single family homeowner versus the rental, but, okay.
Yes, and, and well, I'll just say, as far as the homeowner vacancy rate, one of the issues is that we do have new construction. Um, we have houses that are being built all over town, but it's not affordable housing. And so that's really the issue, and we don't have developers that are really addressing that affordable housing issue for really homeowner units or rental units. So this is where we do hope that this, um, this initiative will help to spur some more development and if not, the homeowner, um, units, but definitely in the rental, rental units that supply. And when we look at, this is for renters, um, when we look at the income bands. And one of the things that we sort of talk about is people use affordable and workforce housing kind of interchangeably. But we tend to believe that workforce housing is at the upper, upper income band. So you're looking more at, um, maybe the fifty to eighty percent AMI. Um, that's where you find a lot of your workforce housing. And, um, so when we look at the, the number of households as far as renters that are cost burdened, you're looking at seventy-eight hundred units. That means seventy-eight households are paying more than thirty percent of their household income for, um, for their housing cost. And when we look at just that thirty to fifty percent income band, that's eighty-seven percent. So we know that rents have been going up, they're increasing, people are having to pay more. Incomes aren't necessarily keeping up with rental rates. So people are paying more when it comes to that thirty to fifty percent, just because they don't have the resources within their household. And, um, and forty-four percent for that fifty to eighty percent income band. And when you start to get into the higher income levels, you can see that the, the cost burden certainly decreases. And for owners, again, you see, it's pretty much that same income range that is more cost burdened than the other, uh, areas. So you've got a thousand and thirty, at thirty to fifty percent, so that's fifty-seven percent of homeowner households that are cost burdened. And then in that fifty to eighty percent, you have one thousand six hundred and eighty. So that's thirty-seven, uh, three, three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five affordable units that are needed. Again, that number starts to decrease as you start looking at higher income levels. And so when you take that seventy-eight hundred and that three thousand seven hundred and fifty-five, and these are unique numbers, there are no duplications, you are looking at ten to eleven thousand units between the renters and homeowners. And so just to talk a little bit about some of the things that we are doing through the Community Development Department. Uh, we do have our emergency, uh, or urgent repair program, as well as construction training program. And operation in as much, and both of these are efforts to help keep homeowners in their homes. If we can keep a household from being displaced and we're able to keep them in that household, then that doesn't mean that now they're out here in the market looking for a house when there's already a shortage. So our goal with these are, with these programs, really to address those most pressing needs or something that may actually displace that household. So that could be a plumbing repair, it could be a hole in the roof, um, just, you know, bathroom, complete bathroom facilities or just making repairs to water and sewer. So anything that could actually make that household have to move, we want to be able to address that. And we have our down payment assistance, uh, program and the down payment incentive program for the core city. So we're continuing to provide seventy-five hundred dollars for down payment assistance. And we have new construction for single-family and multifamily housing. Um, the single-family housing, we are working with our nonprofit agencies right now. They all, we have four agencies that we're working with and they are all working in the South Side community right now. And so that is the only area that we as the city have really taken, taking, taken on in development of housing. And that's in that single-family construction. And then of course partnering with, um, so far it's been Winfield Properties, Winfield Forward, as far as multifamily housing development.
Is it safe to say that even though we're not partnering in the same way over on East Green, or at least in that sort of proximity, some of what we do as a city when we convey lots to, to organizations like Habitat for, for Humanity, I think I said the name right, and in some ways we're helping to support and, um, and help with, with single-family housing development over in those areas, right?
Absolutely. Um, we started, we were working in the Cable Street area with Habitat. Yes, and the issue there is that street right now is closed off, so I am working with transportation and engineering. Um, because, uh, public services and our public safety department would like to see that, that street open back up. And so we're trying to work, um, work out some measure, a transportation measure that would make it safe.
Yeah, cause it's a bit of a hill on the backside of Cable, right? I mean, at the top it was kind of, oh.
Oh, yes, um, at the Russell Street?
Yeah, so statistically how that might work.
Right. It was initially, um, it was cut off or closed because of the distance between university. They did not feel like it was safe for cars to come out of Cable onto Russell. Because when you come over university, they say there's like, um, a blind spot. You're coming up over a hill. And so DOT actually did recommend closing that. So we're looking at some measures that maybe you can only go one direction when you come off the street. So we are working, uh, like I said, with transportation on that. And, um, but yeah, we're, we will work within any of our core city areas as far as new construction. But it's just that in the South Side neighborhood, that is where we have the most property. And some of the other areas, our sites are kind of scattered. And just talking about Habitat, they really like to create community. And so that means that they want to have, you know, several adjacent, you know, or co-located lots. Just so that they can have their homeowners sort of close to one another.
Yeah, and the situation on Seadrill, cause that's almost entirely done, right? All those, like every lot there is done.
It's done. Seadrill is finished.
Yeah, that, I, I can remember we were on Citizens Advisory Council, Mike, I guess what, five or six years ago?
Six years.
Now we're getting old, Mike. Six, six years ago on CAC, y'all were talking about getting dirt from the university just to be able to fill that in, and now for that to be done completely.
Yes, yes, there was a lot of dirt hauled into that, into that project. Um, but yes, it, it's done now. All of the, um, homes are occupied, sold, and, and we're glad to have those nineteen units available.
Thank you.
Certainly, certainly. Sure, Noel, what did I do?
I think you did anything. I'm just being.
Tim from middle here. Oh, that, oh, okay, okay.
You'll tell me next.
Okay, um, the project that I wanted to just highlight here was just to kind of show, show, um, our support, of course, in the affordable housing, uh, multifamily housing arena. Um, Walnut Ridge, this is a project that was approved back in twenty twenty-two. It's gonna be sixty units for seniors, that's fifty-five plus households. And, um, there'll be thirty-one bedroom and thirty-two bedroom units. And I also wanted to sort of point out those income ranges that this project will be targeting. So you do have units that are targeted toward the, what we consider extremely low income households, that's the thirty percent AMI. And then up to sixty percent. So we're not going up to eighty percent in these projects. We are kind of in that mid-range of thirty to sixty percent. And, um, the city provided five hundred thousand dollars, uh, for this project. And this is the one that's gonna be located off of, uh, Ski Club. And so we're hoping that we'll be able, I, I know that they're working on the financing, just kind of finalizing their financing on this. So hopefully it won't be too much longer before they get ready to close on it and start construction. And the flats at Old Winston, this is the newest project that was just completed. I think you all have probably seen some information on this. And, um, forty-eight units for families. And this particular project is gonna be targeting folks at forty to sixty percent AMI. And our contribution to this, uh, we have, um, given them a letter of intent, uh, for one million dollars. And this is gonna be located at the corner of Old Winston Road and University Parkway. The Brentwood School Conversion Project. Now, um, Winfield Properties, they have, uh, secured this property again under contract. And even though we've been kind of working on it for a little while, one of the things that they're looking at doing is instead of the nine percent tax credits, they want to do a four percent, um, tax exempt bond project for the conversion of this project. One of the reasons being is that this site would not be as competitive when we look at the tax credit, the nine percent tax credits, but the four percent tax credits right now, they're not competitive. And so they feel like they would be able to get this awarded. However, when you look at four percent versus nine percent, there, that means there's less equity, which creates a greater gap in their budget. And so I kind of wanted to highlight this project, you can go ahead to this, um, highlight this project because this could be the type of project that you might see coming through the housing fund. You're talking about one hundred and twenty units for families. We'd be looking at fifty to seventy percent AMI, so we're getting a little bit higher as far as those targeted households. But their preliminary budget is showing a four million dollar funding gap. And that's nothing that, right now, in my budget, that community developer would be able to fund. We simply just don't have, um, those funds available. And so that's something, like I said, just to give you an, an idea of the type of project that could come through. And, you know, this might be one of those projects that as soon as the fund is established, we'll be ready to get going. So, you know, that's really what we're hoping. And, you know, with the fund, we're looking at other developers coming in, helping to incentivize their projects and really trying to attract other developers into High Point.
Nina, just, just cause you said something really quickly that I, I'm insinuating, um, but I wanna make sure we're on the same page. When you say not as competitive, are you talking about because where it's nestled, it's not in the same proximity of the grocery stores and some other things? So can you just, cause, just cause I think as a council, this may be our first time talking about it this term. Can you just give us a quick overview again of what that means when you say not as competitive?
Certainly. That means that it needs to be close to amenities, whether that be jobs, um, medical facilities, um, grocery stores, transportation. They look at all of those things that would make this site convenient and easily accessible, that people could actually live, work, and play. You're looking at, you know, just recreation facilities that are nearby, just various things within the community that would make this an ideal location. And so this particular site, um, I know there is, there's not a grocery store that is within, they, they want it within a mile.
Right, and to be clear, when you say they, you're not talking about the city as a, you know, as a, we're not the ones deciding this, this is really federal standards with HUD, right?
It's actually, it's the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. Yes, they are the ones that, um, process and approve the tax credit, low-income housing tax credit projects. They evaluate those projects and approve them.
And to be clear, final point, just for those listening, that standard's not some just arbitrary bad standard. It's a standard to ensure those who do move into basic income housing, that we don't put them in food deserts and medical deserts. They do wanna incentivize folks being closer to amenities, right?
Absolutely, absolutely. They wanna make sure that they have access to the things that they need on a daily basis. And that's employment, employment, groceries, transportation, everything.
Thank you. I, I know during campaign season, that's a question that comes up when people say, well, they're building here, they're building here, well, what they build here? And housing, grocery stores, it's kind of chicken and egg. Grocery stores wanna see more rooftops. But in order for rooftops to come and get, uh, supported with federal or state or even local dollars, a lot of times, the incentive is you put it where some of these things are at. So it's, it's, it's a piece we have to keep working on and, and hopefully things like this housing fund can help us as we begin to fill in some of those gaps.
But if I could say one thing, cause we've been talking about this for several years, but, um, it seems like, I don't know if it's state or federally, that if the grocery store is like a chain. Because a lot of our areas, like I know on, on South Main Street, we've got a couple of those grocery stores that are Latino-owned, that sell everything that you could possibly imagine. So where are we with talking to some of our legislators and stuff to see if we, if they can, um, can kind of lighten that restriction a little bit so that maybe we can get some housing in areas that have grocery stores but not chain grocery stores? Have we had any more conversations?
The comment, the comment period for what's called the QAP or the Qualified Allocation Plan, that's the plan that developers have to use in, um, actually creating their projects. So they look at all of the requirements. And one of those requirements is that it can't be, um, like a family-owned grocery store. It can't be, I don't even believe they call, they consider Aldi's, um, one of the grocery stores, even though we know that there are many of those. When I look at the last QAP, I believe that might have been one of them. So that is something that we definitely can talk with, um, North Carolina Housing Finance Agency staff because they're the ones that actually review the comments. And that's something that we can certainly discuss with them. Even though I know it's beyond that comment period, they have not released the new QAP. So I do believe that we might be able to get something submitted.
Nina, your four percent, is that competitive as well, or is it like, it's just, you're good? Oh, just finance, okay, that's rather low.
Yes, yes, they're, they're not competitive right now, just the nine percent tax credits are competitive. So, um, today we aren't asking for any action, but to, um, just sort of let you all know what, uh, some of the discussions have been and the goals and things that we're looking forward to when we're looking at this, um, fund. So leveraging private investment, um, by establishing a thirty to forty million dollar fund. And that would include, um, hopefully a city investment of approximately two to two and a half million dollars, as well as there would be banks, there would be private foundations. Of course, the High Point Community Foundation will be, uh, sort of spearheading the creation and development of the fund and the fundraising. And then what we're looking as far as outcomes, we do hope that this fund will realize one thousand additional units within the city. Now, of course, how many units we produce depends upon housing cost, development costs, all of those things. But the goal is to at least get one thousand units out of, uh, from the fund. And also to encourage and spur development within, um, areas that are consistent with the twenty forty-five comp plan. So those are our goals.
Nina, with the, with the Fed re cuts, that should make this a little bit more e- effective. Uh, as we, as, if this is established, this should make this a little bit more effective as the Fed continues to cut rates.
Yes, absolutely. Borrowing rates would be lower. So yes, certainly, that, that could, um, help as far as the cost for the overall projects. And when we talk about our target population, and, you know, as I said earlier, you kind of look at affordable and workforce kind of synonymously. But we're really talking about what I would consider my peers here at the city of High Point. The teachers that are, um, you know, teaching our children every day. We're looking at our police officers and firefighters. The HUD median family income is eighty-three thousand dollars for the Greensboro High Point Metropolitan Statistical Area or MSA. And when you look at a household that is at eighty percent AMI for, or area median income, AMI, um, you're looking at sixty-six thousand four hundred dollars for a four-person household. And as you can see, these salaries, depending upon the household makeup, these salaries fall within that range. So they could very well, that's why I say, um, a lot of times people will think of affordable housing as public housing or Section Eight housing, but it's not. It, that's, that's not what we're developing here. We're developing housing for working families. And I wanted to give you just a snapshot of what we have done here with the city as far as our participation in affordable housing projects. And these have all been, uh, developed in partnership with Winfield Properties. Since two thousand and eleven, um, I'll just go from Admiral Point to Abindale Trace here because those are the projects that are actually on the ground, built, you know, they have tenants living in them. We've put three hundred and fifty-two units on the ground in thirteen years. So one of the big things with this housing fund is that we want to be able to provide resources so that we can get these on, get these units on the ground quicker. Um, you know, when we look at that period of time, I mean, we're chipping away at it, but slowly. And so that's one of the reasons that we do believe that this housing fund is really critical. And we do have our two new projects that will, uh, hopefully get going in the next, next couple years. Um, there'll be four hundred and sixty units total. Now, there are also projects, I would say the only other, um, entity that is creating affordable housing rental units, of course, is the Housing Authority. And during this period of time, they did bring online Park Terrace. And Winfield Properties did produce a single, um, a senior housing project that we didn't participate in, but that did provide forty-eight units. So, um, but over this period of time, we're still looking at less than seven hundred affordable housing units, right around six hundred and fifty. So like I said, we're, we're chipping away at it, but just not quickly enough. Okay, are there any additional questions for me before I bring JJ?
Oh, if I could just add a comment, I think also, right now, the amount of growth that we're gonna see in the next few years is gonna be exponential, so it's very, very crucial that we have the stock. Because if we don't, then we're gonna lose that to neighboring cities. So, um, thank you for bringing us to it.
Councilwoman Peters, along those lines, with our, with our comp plan that was just completed, the, um, estimate was for us to have about ten thousand new households by twenty forty-five, which could equate to about twenty-six thousand individuals. So when you think about the timing of this, of trying to accelerate the rate at which we have affordable housing units coming on with all the economic development announcements that we've had, I think it's important, as you just said, to, to make sure that we're preparing. But the numbers that we have in our mind as we're thinking about this is based on what was in our comp plan of that ten thousand new households that would be locating in the High Point community by twenty forty-five.
Do we, uh, do we build in any flexibility percentage-wise if growth accelerates faster than expected?
There are always projections. Each year, um, we do look at the American Community Survey to see if we need to adjust those numbers or if we're on pace to meet that. So you'll see if we're kind of outpacing the projections or if we're falling behind on those. So we do look at it on an annual basis and we can adjust as needed.
JJ, thank you. We'll pass over to you if you wanna jump in.
Um, the great news is your very capable staff has completely, I don't, I have three of my slides I don't need, so we'll put those out. Um, which is really, you know, I'm, I'm JJ Frehler, I'm from Self-Help Ventures Fund. We also have the Credit Union and the Federal Credit Union, I'll talk about our organization. Uh, and we're really here to, as, looking to serve this community. You're part of our community, we're looking to serve you. Uh, and, uh, we're present today on an affordable housing loan fund. It is not a silver bullet to housing challenges, but it's one tool, the toolkit that we think we've seen success with and we're looking to deploying communities that want it. And so we're really invited here. And so thank you for that invitation and we'd like to share our experience, uh, and what we're running so far with these funds. Again, thanks, Ms. Wilson, for proceeding me with the, the real expertise, which is what we count on for our communities to really have expertise in what their housing needs are. So with that, um, we'll start the next slide, please. So who is Self-Help? Um, so who is Self Help? Uh, Self Help is a community development financial institution. The umbrella organization has two credit unions, one federally chartered, one state chartered. And then the Ventures Fund, which I bolded here because we're really talking about the Ventures Fund today. So what we have, we provide retail credit union services across the country to underserved communities. Uh, we do home lending, we do commercial lending, uh, and then we have a Center for Responsible Lending, combining predatory lending and a real estate team. But commercial lending through the Ventures Fund, this is how we do our Affordable Housing Loan Funds. Uh, Ventures Fund is about a billion dollars in assets, and that'll kind of come into, to why the funds work the way they do is we, we leverage that billion dollar in assets in our commercial lending campaign. Next slide, please. Uh, we'll skip this one. You can skip this one. And we'll skip this one. All right. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. So. When I made these slides, I didn't actually know, Ms. Wilson, yet, and I quoted her in one of them, so I'm glad I didn't write. Um, the alarming thing about your presentation is that I am two months away from qualifying for that senior housing, so.
I already got a reservation in.
So good, good company. Um, so what, what are we trying to do with the housing funds here? So we, we look at, you know, conventional housing, typically there's equity and debt that comes in to support conventional housing. Affordable housing is tougher because you don't have as much rental income that can support as much debt. So you have less debt. You typically have less equity too, because if you have a nonprofit, we're just, it's hard to find equity for housing that's not gonna turn off a lot of profit, which with affordable to workforce housing, we're not turning a lot of profit there. So you have this gap. And uh, and then typically ways we fill the gap, uh, you know, you have grants or maybe there's soft debt coming in from a municipality or a county. Uh, you have tax credit, we, we talked about the low income housing tax credit projects. Um, we have subordinate debt. And the subordinate debt piece here, um, this is after your first mortgage that comes in. This is a second mortgage comes into the property. And so the Affordable Housing Loan Funds are filling that gap with subordinate debt. Next slide. I have a slide I did put on here, which is talk about the, the gap becoming a chasm, as we really have rental rates that are stagnant because people just aren't getting paid anymore, construction costs going up. And uh, see, you mentioned, Johnson, you mentioned the interest rates, that is, interest rates are home. I'm sorry, they're broken homes. Uh, so as, as, you know, as interest rates are, are coming down a little bit, they're still high compared to where they were. And so that really has created this gap is becoming more and more of a chasm for housing. And so like, how do we close the chasm? How do we get the gap closed down? Uh, as Self Help looked at our communities, we saw two main challenges. One is acquisition. How do either nonprofit developers or for-profit uh workforce housing developers, how do they compete with market rate developers that are coming in with ready cash to acquire and hold properties for future development or to preserve naturally occurring affordable housing or housing that's actually affordably restricted, but coming up at the end of its affordability level? So those three use cases, we're really in need for acquisition financing. And so what we had as solution is ready, cost-effective bridge financing that allows the organization to acquire and hold the properties while they assemble the capital stack. You can imagine the developer comes in and says, I wanna do a Lytech project with this, but it's gonna take me three years to get the permits and the permissions and the financing. They need that acquisition product to hold it. The other one is the gap financing. And we've talked about the gap here, and this is really, uh, there's, there's limited subsidy available. We talked about the, the federal funds are going away or running out. And so what can communities do with limited both uh city funds, perhaps county funds and philanthropic funds? How can they take those and multiply those to provide this subordinate cap financing? Next slide, please. Um, so this is kind of the idea here. The idea would be a forty million dollar Affordable Housing Loan Fund for High Point uh with roughly ten million in bridge financing and thirty million in gap. Those aren't fixed. Those would really be able to respond to what the needs were in the community. Um, in both cases, low interest loans, the bridge financing is designed for a short period of time, up to five years. The gap financing is designed to complement the first mortgage, especially in a low income housing tax credit project. And that could be fifteen, sixteen years or so on that. Um, on the bridge financing, what we're looking to do is provide like cash, up to a hundred and ten percent for nonprofits, a hundred percent, or excuse me, ninety percent for for-profits financing, so that they can go in and really use it like cash money as opposed to have to have that cash on hand. Um, and it's revolving. So you have a twenty year lifespan of this fund. If those loans would on average go about four years long, you could rotate it five times over. Uh, so that's, that's the goal there. With the gap financing in those, the idea is you make all those gap loans in the first five years of the fund, and then the last fifteen years, they're in the project. So the first five years is a busy time. Um, and that can be up to twenty-five, maybe even thirty percent of project cost for that subordinate financing. It's a flexible tool that can grow and adapt, and we're seeing that now for, we're meeting with Wake County, where we have our largest Affordable Housing Loan Fund, uh, in two weeks to talk about changes to the fund. Uh, we just got done talking with Durham on changes to that fund. And the whole idea is that this fund, as the needs change, the fund can change. It's designed intentionally to be flexible as those needs change. A little example of what we've done, real estate and real people thus far, uh, some pictures of different types of projects we've supported. So in the city of Durham, we've preserved with a ten million dollar fund, two hundred and forty-three units, uh land for about thirty more units to be preserved, uh to be created. And we're targeting five hundred units over the ten year life of this fund. This fund is too small for Durham, and we're about to launch a twenty million dollar fund for the town of Chapel Hill. So there's some bad blood between Duke and Chapel Hills. So we're trying to leverage that to grow for Durham. Uh, Wake County, uh, we've preserved, uh, just the first two years of that fund life, two hundred and eight units. We're targeting thirty-seven hundred units over the life of that fund. That fund is for preservation only, and that is a tough road to hoe. So that is a, that's a difficult uh deployment on there. And we're working to figure out ways to, that we can make this fund better for that preservation mission. The city of Greensboro is our most recently active fund. That's, um, we have a sixty unit renovation, low income housing tax credit renovation in progress. That's where they're designed to, they reach the end of their affordability, they bring in new tax credits. And we've got another nearly five hundred units of pipeline. So that fund launched just about a year ago. A little bit of the history, and I'll, I'll try to really focus on what would we learn through these funds. So the Durham Affordable Housing Loan Fund, uh, that was an organic convening that really the Duke Durham Community Partnership started with Self Help as the hub for this convening. Um, I think the lesson learned from this fund is don't start too small. And we deployed the, it, it was a little slow to deploy in the second year, but then the third year, we had suddenly full deployment. And there's other projects that need these funds. So it was our, it was our, you know, first fund, and so we, we got some good learning from that. This was bridge only. We're really seeing the need for gap in this fund as well. So, uh, and part of this too is have the fund before you really need it. Um, I think, was it uh, Councilwoman Peters that you'd mentioned? You know, we're gonna see a lot of growth here soon. Um, you know, you really wanna have your fund ready, maybe even before you think you have the number of projects for that full amount of fund. Because when you, when they come, you need to have the fund there. The Wake Affordable Housing Preservation Fund, uh, this was a county request for proposal. This is a much longer process, and we don't fault Wake County for the long process. It's what they chose to do was this formal request for proposal. It takes longer to get the fund launched here, uh, but still had a good, successful result on the fund. And they pushed us into doing some things like for-profits. The, the Durham Fund was just for nonprofits. But Wake County introduced us to working with for-profits, and we think about what are the guidelines to put in to help ensure, you know, trust but verify. We wanna trust the for-profits to do good work, also wanna make sure that they're not speeding or, or using the fund for, for reasons that the, the fund wasn't intended for. Uh, again, this is a preservation of existing housing only, so it's a more narrow use case based on those funds. Um, for the city of High Point in particular, this fund's interesting in that ten point five million of the risk capital comes from Wake County. Four million comes from the city of Raleigh. And so it's a good model to show where city and county are combining their funds. And I won't get into all the intricacies at this point unless you all have questions to talk about how that worked out and how we were able to deploy the fund with Wake County, but also with a city that has a smaller geography within the county. So that may be of interest as we look at this fund. Uh, the Greensboro Housing Fund, um, really kudos to the Community Foundation of Greater Greensboro. They spearheaded this operation and, and really started the fund. Uh, we co-administer it with the Institute for Minority Economic Development, who has a parallel funded. Uh, the, the city provides their funds, uh, the risk capital, and the Community Foundation provides Self Help risk funds. Uh, so we have two different products. And uh, and so that was a good example of the Community Foundation coming in saying, we want the fund for our community. And, and how, you know, Self Help, can you be our administrator? We see if you've done this other places, we'd like you to do it here. The other thing to note is, um, the city's interested now in bridge financing. And so the, the Institute for Minority Economic Development is administering a small scale project. Self Help is better attuned to the large scale projects. And so we're doing gap financing only, but the city, we do large scale bridge financing as well. So we're looking to fundraise and, and do that in the future. So there we talk about adapting the fund over time. Uh, Chapel Housing Fund, I'm actually telling a mistruth here. I said launch twenty twenty-four Q four. We're still finalizing the legal documentation on that, but we are anticipating that will be done before the end of the year. That's a twenty million dollar fund. That involves a UNC health system, uh, is really the anchor risk capital for that fund, where they put in five million dollars. And uh, and that's gonna be both bridge and gap financing for the town of Chapel Hill. So relatively small geography, a good size fund to start with there, twenty million. Uh, so it's not just all North Carolina here, Jacksonville, Florida. Uh, the mayor, Donna Digan, has it in her budget to do an Affordable Housing Loan Fund primarily for the four percent low income housing tax credit properties. Uh, that is stuck right now between the mayor and city council. So I won't get into politics, but they're, they're figuring out. Uh, we are a patient lender, so we'll be there when they need us. So that's, uh, that's the city of Jacksonville, Florida. They've got some other challenges on their plate right now with a couple hurricanes just within a couple weeks, so we, we understand that. Uh, not on this slide, um, we, uh, we have not closed the fund yet, but we're anticipating to close a fund for Western North Carolina. That was in the works before Hurricane Helane. Uh, but there's gonna be plenty of work out there and a very unique, I think, approach to the fund for that one. Um, and so, uh, yeah, that's, again, not on the slide yet. Uh, we're in conversations with Winston-Salem Community Foundation. The city council Winston-Salem invited us to work with the Community Foundation on a potential fund, I think kind of in the Community Foundation for Greater Greensboro model. Next slide, please. Uh, partners up here, just giving you the logos of the different folks, you know, Community Foundations, Cities, Counties, Duke University. Uh, that's the risk capital with the top loss investors, and I'll talk a bit about how that works. And then the senior lenders, the folks that are relying upon Self Help's balance sheet to ensure they're repaid at the end of the fund. Truist Wells Fargo, Pinnacle, we mentioned here, uh, Institute Capital, First Horizon, and then Self Help Ventures Fund. We've put funds into our own fund before as well. Uh, a little hard to read probably from the back here, but just the type of borrowers and prospective borrowers, it really runs the gamut. Everything ranging from national developers to local nonprofits. Uh, this I call the money slide. I, I find this helpful when we talk about, well, how does this whole fund thing work? On the far left, you see different types of investors, whether it's government, foundation, regional employers. We'd love to get those folks involved. Bank Community Reinvestment Act investments. Those folks are bringing funds into the fund. So Self Help holds these funds. Some of the funds are what we call top loss, top loss or risk capital. These are funds that if we experience losses in the loan fund from the loans, those funds will take that loss. And those, that top loss is very important because Self Help, we can't as a lender do these type of very high loan to value loans or subordinate financing out of our credit union. We have to do them out of the Ventures Fund. And to do that, we need about twenty-five percent risk capital. Uh, I like to say we're very good at not losing anybody's money, but we need to have that money there available for the risk. And then the senior lenders come in. They're providing capital of the fund, but Self Help's Ventures Fund, billion dollar in assets are guaranteeing those senior lenders. So even in the absolute worst case scenario, because we're lenders, we think about worst case scenarios, we would guarantee those senior lenders repayment. And that's what provides them the incentive and potentially some regional employers or others to be able to provide us low cost, very low cost, long-term capital. Because we need this capital for twenty years. We need a low cost, because all we're doing is adding a modest interest rate to cover Self Help's nonprofit expenses, and then we want it to be very low cost to the borrower. So the funds held at Self Help, I talked about the senior, the guarantees to the senior lenders here. And then it comes in gap financing in a uh conventional kind of development, or if it's a four percent low income housing tax credit development, uh, there's very little mortgage in there, and so the gap financing becomes even more critical. Next slide. Exactly the same on the left-hand side of the slide. This is bridge financing. And in bridge financing, you see here, the, the fund is really providing a lot more of the capital for this acquisition financing, and it revolves over the life of the fund, but it's the same fund. And then after the bridge, where do you go to? Well, after you've figured out what your other sources of capital are, it can be a low income housing tax credit project, it can be historic tax credits, government sponsored entity financing. Uh, there's a whole variety of things that we can see here. Okay, now this is the I chart. Hopefully you folks have a printout of this as well. Um, I emphasize this is notional. So this is a notional, this I want is like, you know, full disclosure, here's how we run our funds. We're taking in funds from various uh investors, so I think city, county, maybe donor advised funds, the Community Foundation here. Uh, typically those funds are very discounted in their rate, zero to one percent. And then we're adding an administration, so then Self Help, here's how Self Help gets paid. We add an administration spread, a servicing spread. And then if they're senior lenders, where national banks or health systems, universities, if they're coming in and they have recourse, then we have a small addition for allowance for losses as well. And then the, these blended rates, the borrower doesn't see one point two five percent from the city and four point seven five from uh High Point University. Um, what they're going to see is this blended rate, and in this example, the blended rate is three point six nine. So just to give you an idea, the blended rate of funds in, in this example was two point oh six, and we're doing it three point six nine to the borrower. The spread here is how Self Help supports its operations. And that's, that's typically how we do our, our nonprofit lending anyway. So what are the cost of funds that we're putting the money in? I'll pause there for questions on that.
We've got about a couple minutes before we need to transition to the next item. How, how, how much more time do you think you need on your?
Uh, next slide, I think is it. So there's uh contact information here. Um, my more talented than me associate unfortunately could not come, and a head of our investment, James Rogero as well. So a good context there if anybody wants to reach out. We're calling for questions.
Okay, awesome. Any, any, any questions from council?
How fast do you, do you think this fund will get to port? And if that's forty million, how?
Sure, so.
I wish you the best gas I can.
Yeah, so deployment, we would really target a five-year deployment to fully deploy the fund and see bridge loans start to rotate, and then the gap financing all to be in. So that's the, that's why we say five years, is to give ourselves a little bit of breathing room there. The timeline actually launched the fund, um, three to six months to pull in the senior lenders once we have kind of commitment on funds to the, the, the risk capital.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to meet you for just a second.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Joe Boss with, uh, I'm representing the High Point Community Foundation today. We uh really loved this idea when we heard Greensboro Community Foundation was doing it, and we wanted to bring it to High Point. Uh, and so it brought in JJ after conversations with Nina and others. Um, our requests to the city, we're also talking with county, we'll also talk with state. We want this to be a public-private partnership. What we love about this fund is that when you look at other projects the city has done, you've put in money with the developer to create X number of units. But if you put a million dollars into one of those developments, you have a million dollars of impact. But with this fund, if you put a million dollars in, I wanna go raise a million dollars of private money and say, look, our city went in, I want private money to match what our city is doing. And then we're gonna go to banks and say, we want you to multiply that. So your one dollar becomes two dollars, becomes eight dollars, and then we're gonna go, and it's gonna be part of a Lytech project that has federal tax credits. So I think it's really a way that the city can be responsible with its funds and have a much bigger impact because you're bringing all these other people to the table. Um, and I also wanna add that this is, as JJ said, is not a silver bullet. Um, we are not ignoring single-family homes by doing this fund. So I wanna emphasize, this is a way to get at one of those big pinch points around needing more affordable rental units in the city. Uh, but I think getting this fund running, get, getting the funds together, getting it to JJ where they use their expertise on these loans actually frees up a lot of our time and energy here locally to focus on single-family homes rather than us constantly trying to work on the rentals because we've really outsourced that to the expertise of Self Help, who is working with the developers and evaluating those projects. So we think it's a way that this can kind of phase one, get these rentals going, and allow us to really focus on single-family uh and how we work on that as well, which means lots of private investment as well as public investment too. But, so, thank you all.
Joe, thank you for that. Um, Joe did say, but, but there's, there's been a lot of incredible work done to kind of get us to this point. And um, Joe, if you don't mind me saying, Joe's chief event officer with the Conde Family Foundation. Um, and so Joe, Joe is volunteering his time in this work to try to get this housing fund to where it is. And everything you said there is about the ROI. Our dollars are, are able to catalyze many more dollars than many other pot, uh, buckets, so on and so forth. So, um, I, I've got a quick question. JJ, you mentioned three to six months for launch. Once non-recourse funds basically are committed, for you to then go out and talk to the banks to get the recourse funding. Uh, where, where do you guys think you are with some of the other folks who you think can support this non-recourse lump sum?
I have a point to, to Mr. Boss there in terms of, I think you've identified, the, the city, the county, and then the donor advised funds were the other target that I had in mind, but anything else to add to that?
Um, yeah, so I mean, we are talking to our other public entities. Um, and having the city be in the process of having these conversations and taking it seriously, as you can imagine, opens up. Being able to have more conversations with other public entities who always ask, so what's the city doing? Uh, so that process has started on the public side. And on the private side, we've started having conversations um with donors, and we will uh continue to have those conversations. Um, so I can't give you a firm deadline on what we're looking at now, but I'm, I'm wanting to, to pull these funds together as quickly as we can and get moving. We have had a number of senior lenders um who have expressed a lot of interest. We have had a number of senior lenders who have expressed a lot of interest, and that's from medical systems to banks that I think will jump in on this. And I think we're getting in on the earlier side and going pretty aggressively. So to our folks in Greensboro, we want to be able to do a $40 million fund, right, and show them, you're in High Point, we're taking this really seriously. And I think that can bring a lot of the senior lenders to the table for us, so.
Yeah, I'm sensitive for how much time we have here. Nina, was there something else that you all need to say?
I think it relates to timing. Nina has some thoughts around timing. Our goal is to be able to, unless there's any kind of major concerns that we're hearing from council today, is for staff to continue in having some in earnest conversations around what terms might look like, with a goal for us to be able to have something back to by the end of the year, the first part of 2025, to be able to make a commitment. We have been looking at potential sources of funds. There are some remaining funds that were enabled through the ARPA process that could go towards this use. We also have some funds that will be available through our 2019 housing bond premium associated with those projects, around $390,000. That could help get us to that $2 million number, and then we could talk about how to get to the 2.5, if that would be the appetite of council. But unless there is any major concerns with what we've shared today or the direction that we're heading, the staff is ready to continue proceeding in earnest in the conversations.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, just as a point of kind of wrapping up, just to talk just very briefly about the structure. We know that High Point Community Foundation would be, they would establish the fund, but they would actually enter into an agreement or a contract with SelfHelp, but we, the city, would enter into our own contract with SelfHelp. So that is the way that that would be structured. And we are working on, right now, we've been looking at some of the terms and things like that. I'll just give you a quick example. One of the terms might be location. Do you want the city's funds to only be deployed within the city limits of High Point? So just some of those things would be, some of the ideas and things that we would look at as far as the term sheet, and we're working with legal, SelfHelp, with High Point Community Foundation, and we are certainly hoping and aiming for our term sheet to be in line pretty well or pretty good with what the community foundation does develop and what they actually structure. So those are sort of our next steps, but I do want to reiterate, the $2 million to $2.5 million, if you compare that to the 6.7 million that we have already invested, and that has given us 460 units, so just to really hone in on just how many more units this housing fund could produce if we were to be able to leverage these funds through that public-profit partnership.
Yeah, Nina, that's a really good point. You said $6.5 million.
On that table.
Has gotten us 460 units.
Yes.
But $2.5 could potentially get us 1,000, which is really, thank you so much for that last point. We've got some time, y'all, before there's an official decision to be made on this. So in light of where we need to go in the agenda, I'm going to ask council members to ask questions outside of the meeting to staff. They've got a pretty nice runway set up for us, and we appreciate you all doing that. I'll also note, because Joe said it, and I want to say it a little more direct, if you don't mind, there are a number of people who they've got to talk to, and county, state folks, banks, university, hospitals, they're going to have those conversations, but I can guarantee the very first question that's going to come from every single one of them is, where's the city on this? And so at a certain point, I know we've got our time, that we've got to do what's right and be good stewards and not rush through this, but also, I don't think any of them, I don't think any of those diamonds are going to fall until we're official. So just keep that in mind. The sooner we get locked in, the sooner they have a greater chance of getting other folks locked in. So with that, let's go ahead and transition to our closing session. Is there a motion for us to go into closed session?
Second.
Second. There is a motion made by Councilwoman Peters, seconded by Councilmember Andrew. Any discussion on a motion, go into closed session. I will say thank you to every single person who's here who's here to head out. We appreciate y'all. All those in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye. And against, the ayes have it, we'll go into closed session. Thank you all.